The EPA regarding our sewer sanitary separation issue and disconnection problem with our illicit discharges. We did do an FCA. We contracted with Stan Tech to do an FCA. What we were shooting for is to show, in order to get more years, this does not affect our interest rate from low-interest loans, but it does affect the number of years we will get to be able to do the work. Why that's important is because intention is to be able to do as much of that work very quickly as possible because that's where we save our residents more and more money, to the extent that we can do our inflow and infiltration reduction in a five- to seven-year period that will allow us three years to be able to study it with flow meters to make sure that we do not have to build tanks. Many of you know, and I think that I had representatives of C Mac that I talked to about this as well in the Finance Committee meeting, is that we were going through a process of trying to help the EPA understand what we were up against in terms of the time limitation to pull off this program that could stretch between 120 and 172 million dollars over the period. When we submitted the FCA, we were able to, we could not get the EPA when we first started negotiating, remember right, we wanted them to allow us to propose a 75% reduction in inflow and infiltration citywide. They didn't believe, they don't believe we can do it. So, we weren't going to argue for another year and have interest rates go up on the money from the Water Pollution Revolving Loan Fund. So, we decided that we were going to agree to a 50% reduction, but that allow, that requires us to have somewhere in our plan, large storage tanks in two locations, which we believe we will offset by having it done quicker and have no need to do it. And I said the timing is important because when we got a letter back from the EPA a couple of weeks ago, it made it clear that we're only going to use 15 years because of the egregious nature of the offense. Well, nobody here committed that offense, and most of our citizens had no idea this was going on in terms of what it meant to the environment and what it meant to a federal law violation. So, we went back to them and said, "We have to have at least 18 years because that allows us five to seven years and three years of study so that we can avoid building those expensive tanks." The expensive tanks in our plan, by the way, enabled us to get the extra time over 15 years to begin with, kind of a catch-22 because we were in the process of trying to, there's a residential factor and a overall community factor. Those factors have to be over two in order to show us high impact financially. If you look at, the FCA talks about this. It barely got us into high impact. They still believe that was worth a 15-year schedule. We said back that, we, let me say to them, "If you want to start enforcement action, go ahead." Because 15 years is not enough, and all it will do is cost our ratepayers that much more money. So, they did come back with another proposal that was 17 years and 12 for the Uptown, what they call large interceptor storage, is a 90-inch pipe behind East Harrison and all the way down to Ford Street with a very large 90-inch pipe that had extra sewage storage. We believe that once we're done, that will be obsolete and will never be used again. We didn't want to do that. So, they also gave us 18 years and 10 years to do the Uptown storage. We also agreed that was, was an impossibility because, again, we would be building a storage tank as part of the FCA analysis that isn't necessary in year seven. And we didn't want to spend, you know, 10 or 15 million dollars on something that would make no sense to have. You simply did it as a stopgap measure for five years. They came back, finally agreed to 18 years and 12 for Uptown. That allows us enough time to prove to them, but it puts us under the onus of making sure this program is pushed very quickly, that we achieve at least the 50% reduction INI at a 25-year control event for events. That does not mean we will always and forever not discharge. It means we will not be pumping to discharge. But, as of today, Finance Director Harkey, how many do we know? I think we have over 1,600.
Over 1,600 inspections scheduled.
Yeah. So, we are moving, and every time we send a letter out, it puffs up, we get a lot, maybe 50, 60, 70 in a day, and then as it tails off, we get less and less. We're going to have to send another letter out to kind of remind people that it's important that they schedule inspections, even if you get an inspection that is now fall, almost winter of 2026. Once we put new crews on, we're able to compact that schedule. But, as we want to make sure everybody knew that the FCA was in, what that means is now that we've agreed to, come to agreement with the, with the state EPA, we have to submit the revised SSES report with those parameters in it, and that'll be done and submitted April 1st. We believe since we agreed ahead of time what those parameters were, that it should be a quick turnaround. Once we have that quick turnaround, we will submit it to the Attorney General's Office for a consent decree, which is what allows us and authorizes us to spend money inside private homes in terms of the low-interest loan money we will receive from the state. So, that's, I know it's fast and it's a lot of information. If anybody even in the audience wants to talk to me afterwards about what that really means, or call me, I'd be fine to do that so that we all know. But, we are on the right track, and we're, and I tell people when I meet with them, I've now met with over 370 different people on this, that have asked for meetings, and one of the questions they ask is, "Hey, when do you think that'll happen?" And what I tell people is, "When you go to, to ask for contractors for inside work to solicit the grant that you're eligible for, I would wait till May or June to be able to solicit those bids because I, because these contractors will only hold their bids so long. We want to make sure that you are in the best position to take advantage of those grants." So, that's what we're telling people. Anybody in the audience who's in that situation, I haven't spoken to, probably no need, unless you have an emergency, unless your sewer is backing up now, we do accommodate those emergencies. And unless that's a problem, I would wait probably till May, late May, middle of June before you get prices for the grant program. So, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll move to committee, the whole, President Barrow.
Thank you, Mayor McDonald. You have your agendas on front of you. If you have any questions or concerns. [inaudible] Lineback.
Thank you, Council President Barrow. I believe the budget is probably, you know, one of the most salient issues here tonight, so I just want to talk about that one first. I know I became, you know, I was made avail, it was made available to me, I think on Saturday morning it got out. It may have been available earlier, but I think we need more than three days for the community to weigh in with their inputs and priorities, as well as understand some of the funding constraints that the city has to operate under. You know, just dollars are not quite dollars. There are restrictions on some of that, and I think all that's very important for the community to understand. But, I also recognize that this appropriation measure is due very soon, but I think we could have a special meeting within less than a couple of weeks after further deliberations to consider what's absolutely essential and beneficial for our residents for this coming year. Kind of an emphasis on the timing of this upcoming year. Because there's a lot of things in there that are definitely good for the city, but it's like, do they have to happen now? So, that's my comment. And I, I'd like to make a motion that we make this a first reading.
Thank you. Is there a second motion?
I'll second that.
Seconded by John Fiskus. Call the roll. Noonan?
No.
Puffenberger?
No.
I'm sorry. Do you want to do that, Jennifer?
Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Making notes.
Mr. Barrow, could we, we ask before we vote, Ms. Harkey?
Discussion.
To explain whether, oh, I'm sorry, excuse me.
No, you're right. You're right. Go ahead. Discussion.
To briefly explain whether or not we can, you know, wait in terms of due dates and legal requirements is when they're due.
Sure. So, by law, the budget is due to the county by March 31st. That allows us to spend funds. If we don't have a budget in place, we can no longer spend funds. I also want to clarify, we keep, I've heard out in the community, we keep talking about the budget, the budget, budget, but I really think the, the concerns are with the capital budget. There's also an operating budget that keeps us functional every day of all of our departments to pay wages, to buy supplies, and that sort of thing. So, I just think it's important that we split those two out. But, yes, it's due March 31st.
Thank you.
Well, I guess I'd also, sorry, can I talk?
Yes, please.
I mean, I guess one of my thoughts with that is, I'm wondering what we could really accomplish by March 31st, and would, would not seem really rushed, especially considering a couple, so, for example, the master plan that we're working on this year, that was literally in the budget for at least three to four years before it ever happened. Just because it's in the budget this year does not mean it's going to happen this year. I mean, that's been shown to me time and time again over the past years that I've been paying attention to the budget and municipal finance in general. So, with that in mind, you know, we have community discussions coming up. Why can't, why can't conversations be had during those already scheduled community discussions, questions be asked about a lot of just kind of basics with municipal finance, and we can have discussions with residents since those are already set up, and not try to rush and jam in, you know, something before the 31st. I know part of the issues with it coming to this meeting is, it took a long time to get all of our schedules together to be able to have the Finance Committee meeting. So, I mean, it's, it's very difficult to get everyone's schedules together to talk about this.
Can I just add to that? So, the temporary budget was passed in December. So, this whole budget process, I mean, it actually continues all year long, but really in earnest starting in August. So, I'm working on the budget, gathering information, building the wage budget. We had our CBA agreements this year too, so that delayed personnel budgeting. But, I am continually working on it, having conversations with the administrator, with supervisors of each of the divisions, and building it. Even just through conversations that we have just in general meetings, a project or a piece of equipment may be needed, and I will include that in the capital schedule at that point, so I don't forget about it, and so we can have conversations about it later. So, this is, it didn't just, it didn't just develop the budget over the last couple of weeks, nor did council just become aware of, of projects too, right? There's lots of ongoing projects. Like Councilman Puffenberger just said, there's lots of items on the capital schedule that sometimes they just don't get done because of time constraints, and will get pushed to the next year. And that's happened many times. So, I just wanted to point that out too.
Thank you, Mayor McDonald.
Yeah. Thank you. My experience with the budget, which is pretty extensive because I had it not only as a councilman, but as a police chief as well, is the capital side are proposals, they're not mandates. It's just because it's on there doesn't mean it's going to happen. And it can be either a time restraint, or it can be, maybe it doesn't happen at all. For example, my proposal for an outdoor range was on the capital budget for five years, five budget cycles. And it kept going to committee, and it kept getting revised. And then sometimes it was dead for a little while, and then it would come back. And then it was, it was reduced in cost. We tried to cut it back and so forth. So, those discussions are certainly fluid, especially on, well, on the capital side only, on the, on the operating side, it's not. But, on the capital side, a budget is a goal. It's a proposal. It's not a mandate to spend. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilman Fiskus?
Yep. Thank you, President Barrow. Kind of piggybacking on what Ms. Puffenberger said, every year, Finance Director gives us these nice binders with everything. Went back in, I'm, like everyone has said, there's things that are in here that don't get done. In a couple of emails I got, people brought up Library Park, and I am the biggest proponent of doing something with that park. 1.7 million dollars was budgeted for that, and for various reasons, time, funding from, from grants we were hoping to get, it got put on the back burner. We're not giving it up, but, you know, things get pushed, pushed down. Our budget right here goes at least to, you showed us the other day, it was 2035, if not further, like, of plans because we have to have a roadmap of where we're going. So, like everyone has said, this is not a mandate to spend. This is giving us an idea of what we might want to do.
Thank you. Thank you. And one thing I want to add to, one second, thank you, is council, we've gotten a lot of emails, of course, the minute the finance meeting was over, "Don't spend money on parks, and don't do this, and don't do that. Everybody's expenses are up in Maumee." I agree. That's true. The water, the sewer bill, the, you know, our fire levy, this was well needed, and thank you for doing that because I feel much better sleeping at night knowing we're going to be taken care of first when something happens. But, a lot of, these, these funds rather that are directed for these capital projects aren't, isn't money that can go to pay water bills or pay particular expenses that our, that our residents have. The reason Maumee is really is flourishing with new business coming is because of the projects that we've done. When we put in the Topath Park, a lot of people didn't like it because it's, you're using too much resources. No one's going to use it. Nobody goes down there now. Well, I'm pretty sure Chief could confirm, there's hundreds and hundreds of people throughout the month that go and enjoy it. That's the, that's the thought behind bringing up Epstein Park that hasn't been touched in at least three decades. But, that's the reasoning behind this, is to bring more people, more revenue to the city so we can help defer the cost. Thank you. Dr. Birch?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I just want to make it very clear, appropriations, as I said, it's not a mandate to spend. This is a general appropriations measure, which we refer to as a budget. Large expenses, like a million dollars spent on a park, have to be approved if they're over a certain amount by state law. These come back before council to be discussed again and again and again. Simply having it set aside as a set aside in a budget doesn't mean it's going to be spent. I do want to talk a little bit about two projects in general that we've got emails on. Epstein Park. Epstein Park is a, we got to look back at when Arrowhead was developed. There's no shock that Arrowhead is half-full. At one point, Arrowhead gave us 80% of our total revenue. We have to do something. This is the reason council gave a CRA to a very fancy apartment complex to try to drive revenue, because companies want their employees living close. We have some other projects we're working on that we think makes it conducive for Arrowhead to get renewed investment like we've seen in the last about a year. We've had, we've actually created enough jobs in the last three years inside of Arrowhead to actually, to actually make up for the loss of St. Luke's and pay your jobs. So, it's been tremendous asset. Problem is, most business parks die after 25 years. This thing's been around 45, and it's because of the standards that the city has, and the curbs, and the trees, and all those things that keep its value in Arrowhead. One of those things, and we heard from the Arrowhead Board, the Arrowhead Association Board, and the Architecture Board, is that little of nothing was spent. In fact, I didn't know Epstein existed until two years ago. I went out and took a walk with John Fiskus, and it was horrible. You couldn't walk through it. We did invasive species removal like the volunteer group did on the river, and then we had our service guys help out later. But, investing the money, remember that Arrowhead used to draw companies there by having food trucks and so on, which is really what the park is for. Trying to do something in terms of infrastructure investment in a large park that's almost eight acres inside of an area that connects to the rest of the city, which means it could be used by anybody, and have a small parking lot there, is for the purpose of generating revenue and economic development in the future. I got to tell you, I've lost a lot of projects in places I've been, when somebody will come to town and they go through certain neighborhoods with their family, they're about ready to locate a company or manufacturing firm and said, "Wife wouldn't live here. My staff won't move here. See you later." Because they go through areas of town that haven't been invested in terms of public investment in decades and decades. Arrowhead has essentially been left alone, thinking that somehow that gravy train is going to keep going. And I got to tell you, and I want to make it very clear, that most of the money that we drive on from the city of Maumee is spent by people who work here but do not live here. At some point, that is going to come to an end, and we have to do whatever we can, and that's why staff, Jennifer, myself, Matt, Matt, everybody in council got together and said, "Hey, we got to do something that makes Arrowhead survive." The first step was, instead of just office use, do mixed use, because that's what makes people, makes communities survive in today's day and age. We have to make some public investment to make sure that companies and young engineers and young people, there's a lot of engineering jobs in there, want to live close to where they work, and they want to have these amenities. That's part of what building a strong community is today. Second of all, there are some comments about spending money on the Arrowhead road extension or paving inside of Arrowhead. Before I go, I want to say, about 80% of the money that's being spent on Epstein Park could not be spent anywhere else. It's special revenue funds derived from Arrowhead. They can only be spent in Arrowhead. That money's going to sit there, or we got to start reinvesting in Arrowhead to make sure that that park survives. Second of all, the money that's being spent in, for Arrowhead paving down Indianwood and Ford Street and the ditch enclosure there, is money that was negotiated between the city staff and Columbia Gas in order to get a high-pressure gas main. That money is legally obligated to be spent exactly where we budgeted it. There is no option. We either give the money back, or we do, they gave us the money. They gave us the money to do it, and we show it on our budget as a revenue because it came from an outside source, and then we expense it as an expenditure in, in the capital budget because it is a capital expense. The gas company doesn't build roads, so they ask us to repave and do those infrastructure items. That money cannot be spent anywhere else but where it is being spent. If we do a pavilion on the river because it's been budgeted last year, if that happens, that has to come to council once bids are received, and they have to decide whether they want to do it or not. And there'll be plenty of time for people to weigh in on that. So, there's a number of these items that I saw in emails that came in, that there was a number of questions, and anybody who wants to see those questions, when we look at budget items, we don't ask just, "Oh, can this money be spent somewhere else?" We ask is, "How does that money get spent to make money?" Because if we spend money just to fix certain things that we want, rather than not realizing where that money is actually going and the money it will create in the future to offset future revenue losses or offset decline of certain neighborhoods or certain areas that produce a huge business windfall for the cities of this, for the citizens of this community, would be a travesty. You wouldn't, I don't think council or staff would be doing their jobs if we simply ignored the fact that infrastructure has to be maintained. I mean, Arrowhead has been sitting there for a long time, and anybody in this audience can raise their hand to a number of business parks in this region that were here 25 years ago and are no longer there. They just died. There's nobody reinvested. And it is imperative that we reinvest in those communities to make sure that we have revenue for the future because we simply survive on income tax by people who don't live here. Seniors don't pay income tax here when they're retired, and if you live here and work somewhere else, you know, you don't pay income tax here either. So, you have to rely on people that come to town, spend, pay income tax, and then leave to go somewhere else, or live here, because people who live here and work here get, would pay income tax too. But, if that gets changed by the state, or we lose Arrowhead and some of our economic opportunities there, we're going to be a world of hurt far beyond we could ever imagine. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor McDonald.
I just wanted to share with council that this week I was contacted by Site Selection Ohio Magazine, and they want to do a piece on Maumee. This magazine basically is shared with Corporate Ohio, Corporate America. They like what we're doing. They see the investment that we made in town. They like the development that they see so far. They think we're a place for the future. And they're going to interview me next week to do a piece in this magazine, and this magazine is highly subscribed by a lot of different corporations in Ohio and around the country. So, I mean, this is huge for us, to be selected to do this and to share what we've done and some of our plans and some of the renovation things that we've taken in Old Town and tried to prepare for the future. That was shared in my State of the City address, that we need to Maumee, we need to move Maumee forward. We need to think of our future, and if we don't, then we will wither on the vine. And so, I'm pretty proud of this opportunity and looking forward to that. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor McDonald. Councilman Lineback?
Yeah. My comments in no way neglect the need to invest in our city. That's, I think, a given. The second item, I'm not endorsing or criticizing any particular project, actually, in looking at the capital budget items, which I had the first chance to look at them on Thursday morning at the Finance Committee meeting. Probably easily 80%, I could say, "Okay, makes sense." But, for sure, it's not, my belief is that that appropriation request is not the administration's appropriation request. It's not city council's appropriation request. It needs to be the appropriation request for, you know, our city. And so, I think a little extra time for citizens to perhaps come up to the same level of understanding that council has and the administration has would be beneficial. Because I think you even just, Dr. Birch, were just mentioning some things about funding constraints that are very important to understand. And the last item is that my experience is that the best way not to spend the money is not to include it in the appropriation request in first place, rather than say, "Well, it's there, but we may not spend it." (applause) I'm just... I'm just asking for more time for the citizens to weigh in, and that we would, we would need to act quickly to say, is there anything there that we want to reconsider?
Thank you. There was a second to...
Josh.
What was your motion?
Gabe.
Two votes already.
Gabe, I think, Josh.
I'm sorry.
I think I've got a question here, because we have also, we've already figured out that just because it's on the budget, it doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be spent. So I kind of have another question. If we were to go line by line, revisit this, take things out, does that strike any possibility of any of these projects actually happening this year, if you take it out of the budget?
I think there are projects that if you wanted to do them or even consider them this year, would have to be in this appropriations measure, because you wouldn't have time to amend the budget later on, go through the readings, you need to do that, and then make sure you had a proper bid.
Mayor McDonald?
I shared about the range, and one thing that we did do during the range is it had a cost, and it did take about a five-year period before to get there. But the finance director at that time did set aside a fifth of the money every year in order to get to that point, to build the range. So it wasn't like it was completely off the books. So if it was going to cost a million dollars to build that range, then there was basically a $200 savings every year for that five years and when we got to the end of the five years. So I just share that, because that is an option with some high-priced things, is that you kind of save to that end. So it has been used in the past and effectively.
Thank you, but as I understand it, if we're talking about just this park issue, that we wouldn't have that luxury of that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
There's certain projects that that applies to and others...
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, Jennifer?
No.
I'm sorry.
Your vote.
I think you have a vote.
There's a motion.
You had a motion, and you have two noes, Noonan and Buffenberger.
Okay. Barrow?
No.
Fiskus?
No.
Harris?
No.
Hert?
No.
Lineback?
Yes.
Okay, that motion is defeated. You can carry on with committee, the whole thing.
So we have any other concerns or questions on the agenda? Councilman Lineback?
Sounds like a tape recording. Items 10D and 10E, which are compensation-related items, I think they're probably pretty well-understood within the administration, but I think these two items also should be treated as first readings to give affected employees, you know, more of an opportunity to understand what the implications are for the changes, so, and the rationale for them. I believe, I believe those items that are in there are not uncommon in private industry, for sure. I think I understand the reason for them, but again, I think the people are likely to be affected, I'm not sure that they have a full understanding of it, and just providing some more time instead of making it an emergency vote would make more sense.
Could I ask you what in particular you're talking about?
The changes in 10D and 10E, which have to do with the city having the ability to pay out some sort of accumulated comp times and vacation time.
Now, Dr. Birch, could you enlighten us on this?
Yeah, these three changes to the ordinance are for the purpose, primarily the purpose is to allow, because of the backlog of sewer inspections, that we've thought, we have guys that are working a lot of hours, and right now, if you're a salaried staff in the administrative support ordinance, anything worked over 45 hours, you can accrue one hour of comp, hour for hour, it's not time and a half, that you can accrue and be paid out later. And the management ordinance is over 50, and the director ordinance is over 55. We have four supervisors that are putting in an inordinate amount of time, they used last year were overtime employees and were exempted by Federal Standards Act, and we wanted to make sure that pay period eight, which starts next week, and pay period 19, that we did a trial run to allow them to accrue over 40 hours because they're working in an inordinate amount of time. We wanted to make sure they had the right to be able to do that, so they're getting time away from their family to do sewer inspections and do lead service inspections, which has really become a real problem, not been real publicized, but that's happening throughout the nation after the Flint water crisis, and our guys are getting bogged down with that. Simply a trial run, and we wanted to make sure that if people were accruing those, that the city had the right to buy out those balances so that we weren't paying them out later at a higher rate, and that they could also ask for those balances or half of those balances to be paid in a year to make sure that they weren't getting paid out at a higher rate for time that was accrued. So that's really what these are, these have nothing to do with wages, they do have, like Councilman Lineback said, they have to do with compensation in terms of when you get paid out for things that would normally be overtime that are accrued as time off. People can't take the time off, so they're accruing high balances because we just don't have the time to get the sewer stuff and so on that we're doing without having to accrue inordinate time, we have to start getting off the books.
So to simplify it, they're getting paid now for what's happening instead of banking it?
Well, they're banking it, one part of it is they're banking it at 40 hours over for four or five supervisors.
Right.
And the other ones, including this management ordinance and those supervisors, is about buying down those balances at the rate in this year's rate, rather than letting them accrue it for a couple of years where the rates are higher and we're paying out more money. We're trying to get those things off the books. In other words, we're not carrying unfunded liabilities into the future.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilman Lineback?
Just as a follow-up. That's how I understand it, I support the measures, but they don't affect me. So that's why I think we should just, we could make this another, you know, part of a special council meeting if we needed to, if we just needed to do it for a week.
What are the implications to waiting three readings versus doing it now?
It's another pay period that would go by, because right now, like Dr. Birch said, they are in the 50-hour ordinance, so they are not accruing any overtime or comp time until they work past 50 hours, and there's two crews in particular that are working towards EPA mandates, you can probably guess who they are, that we would like to kind of roll back that 50-hour rule to the 40-hour rule temporarily until we can get staffing up, and then, like Dr. Birch said, earn hour-for-hour comp for anything over 40 temporarily.
All these eventually save us money over the long term.
And they're essentially not able to get that 10 hours, because you said, taking it from 50 to 40?
Allows them to accrue, but we also have to be able to pay it out.
Right.
Immediately, instead of, like, within six or seven weeks, rather than actually accruing it into another timeframe when the wages are higher.
Mayor McDonald?
Thank you. Obviously, the whole sewer project has brought some challenges to us and some things that we're learning as we go along, as far as staffing, and these guys are yeoman work. They're doing an excellent job with everything that they're doing, and I do not think we should treat the staff this way. Thank you.
Any other comments on this?
Did you make, did he have a motion on this?
I'm sorry?
No.
We don't, I don't think we had a motion. Do we have a motion?
No, no motion. It's still discussion.
Thanks, Mike.
I think this concludes this committee of the whole. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to citizen comments, we have a number of them here. It's three minutes per person, two minutes if the subjects start to get repeated, and so we'll start with Mr. Papelmeier. Yes, Dave? Just state your address, please. Welcome.
Too short. All right, so Dave Papelmeier, 318 Kingsbury. I do not have a speech written tonight, but it's going to be a mess. So this weekend, I emailed all of council and Dr. Birch and the mayor about a letter I received from a senior citizen in the community. She wrote me a letter, okay? The letter was actually dated February 11th, I just got it on Friday. So she's like, "Why haven't you called?" Well, I just got it. But a lot of this may have been addressed, but when it comes to budgets, yes, they are complex, they are not simple, but when the community sees monies for murals and fences and things like that, and our seniors are getting left behind because they cannot afford hundreds of dollars of increases in their water bills over years, okay? I hate going back to my time as a PT, but I worked with seniors, that's who I worked with, okay? Something like this is the first domino of someone losing their home, okay? So when finances start to get hard, okay, if you've had parents go through this, I'm probably talking, you know, pitching to the choir, but when seniors can't afford something, it eventually, you know, yards become unkept, they can't keep up. Eventually, what happens is they have to move in with their kids, and then now a house, now a house is sitting there, right? Worst-case scenario is they don't have kids, they don't have support system, and now they're moving into a nursing facility, okay? This person that wrote me has been living in Maumee for 57 years, okay? Her house is probably paid off. So now what happens? She has to sell her house to pay the nursing home, okay? I guess, and I did not plan on talking tonight, but literally, the shower thought I had this morning, okay, is let's take some of these cosmetic appropriations that we're looking at, and I know we may not be able to move from budget to budget or from fund to fund, but let's find a way to take some of these cosmetic improvements and set up a fund, set up a grant, so that the seniors there, ready to serve water bills, we take care of. And I'm not talking all seniors, poverty level a little bit above, but, you know, let's make seniors on fixed incomes barely hanging on only pay for the water they use, okay? So it's just, it's a hard sell to the community when we're talking about all this beautification, and our seniors are getting left behind. I have seen this happen. When I would work with people in their home after a total knee replacement, they told me, "I can't afford to go to outpatient because I can't afford the co-pays." So please, let's figure something out. I'm a businessman, I understand, I want Arrowhead to be good, but we need to help our seniors before it's too late.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Valerie? Valerie?
Valerie Javenucci, 628 Midfield Drive. I have a couple of things I'd like to address. One is I support the fishermen and their complaints on the signs that are posted saying "No parking" on the streets, when I've been complaining for five years about people who are parking in front of my driveway constantly because they're dropping their kids off at school or picking them up from school on Midfield. So, you know, if you could put signs there, you could put them on my street, because I've had it more than, every year, all the time during school season, called the police several times, but I support them and their complaint about the signs. My second issue is, it's the first time I drove on, or rode my bike on the path this past weekend, and I did mention it to Mr. Birch, about how when I did, I noticed a lot of the slabs are actually crumbling. That's our money, that, I'd like to know who that contractor is, because I'm having cement work done on my driveway. I don't want that contractor, I don't want faulty cement. And the other thing is, I'm very disappointed that there's no agenda to follow, no agenda sheets. I usually follow that. You guys were able to just breeze right through what your agenda was, but I didn't know where you were headed or what you were going to talk about. And then lastly, I certainly hope that you change the name of Epstein Park to something different, because we don't want to be haunted by Epstein. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Val?
Greg?
Is it Morlock?
Yep. Just trying to help.
People are out.
Good evening.
Hello.
I'm a Marine Corps veteran, I'm a veteran of the Maumee River for 38 years. We would like to know why parking was shut down and why camping was taken away from us. We spent millions of dollars in this community. I bring people in from Texas, Oklahoma, South Dakota, that we spent a lot of money in this town. And if this is going to continue, we're not going to spend one more dime in this town. And all I hear is revenue, revenue, revenue. But you don't want our money? Is our money not as good as everybody else's money? I don't understand. I see families come down to Harrison Street every day. I fish this river 60 days a year. I see families come down with their kids, their wives. Nowhere else in the nation can you fish from the mud and catch walleye. That's a privilege to come to this town and do that. But you keep pushing us away. Perrysburg, Bowling Green, Haskins would love us. They're begging us to come to their communities and spend their, spend our money. So you, you consider the average fisherman coming here for the weekend from out of town, South Dakota, North Dakota, wherever you may be, Cincinnati, you're dropping over $1,000 a weekend, and they come here every single weekend to do that. So you're a fisherman, correct, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I see pictures of you on Facebook holding up beautiful trophy walleye. You're a captain's license, correct? So why are you allowing fishermen to be pushed out of your town? I don't understand it. I grew up in Perrysburg.
Keep going, you have three minutes, I don't want to interrupt you.
I grew in Perrysburg my whole life. This is a passion of mine. I run a Facebook page with over 11,000 members on it that depend on me to keep this going. So what's next? We're not going to be able to fish the water? You're going to take that away? Why is it that you're pushing us out of your town? I'd like to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sir, I didn't cut your name.
My name is Gregory T. Morlock, 15810 Roche Road, Perrysburg.
Thank you. I'll answer you as soon as we get through the, as soon as we get through the queue here. Thank you. Yep.
And one last thing, Mayor, I would just like to know why one person that lives on Harrison Street brought this up, and why it was not voted on by the entire council before it made a rule? Thank you.
Thank you.
Jamie? Jamie Die?
Hi, I wrote an email to council, and I'm just going to go ahead and read that. I wanted to write a letter in support of the 2025 fiscal year budget being reviewed at tonight's meeting. I know the budget seems high, but I was happy to see there are many large-ticket items, at least partially funded by grants and Columbia Gas. Some of the other large items were previously budgeted for or the community has asked for repeatedly over the years. Reading through this budget, there are many things that I've been hoping for that are included. I'm sure there are people who think some of the things I will be listing are inessential and therefore should be cut, but I believe the city needs to make these improvements for the quality of life of residents and for the vitality of the city as a whole. I believe the quickest way Maumee can become undesirable to residents and visitors is to become stagnant and afraid of change or improvements. We need to invest in our city. The first thing, which I am very excited about, even though some may think it sounds boring, is the public restrooms at both White Street and Uptown. I brought this up several times as part of the master plan process, but I don't think you can have a truly usable Uptown space for visitors without public restrooms. This is also true along the towpath, which brings many people to Maumee. I have a four-year-old, and finding a public restroom can often be very difficult. Having public restrooms in well-utilized locations in the city makes for a much more inviting experience for people of all ages. I'm also very excited about other things happening along the river. We are incredibly lucky that Maumee chose to save its waterfront to be utilized as park space instead of private residential like Perrysburg did. Everybody, including non-residents, has access to the river and all its amenities. Adding a mural, boat ramp, and the towpath pavilion will make it an even more pleasurable experience for all and more accessible. Toledo has some excellent murals, and I'm happy to see this form of artistic expression spreading to Maumee. Murals can give a sense of identity to a place, but are also just something that makes people happy, and I feel like we could use a little bit more joy in our lives right now. I think it's a great way to repurpose the existing rail bridge in the Maumee River, and will be wonderful to view from the towpath or the Maumee Perrysburg Bridge. Additionally, the towpath pavilion will make it easier for the city and other groups to host public events along the river, which will bring more... There are a restricted number of access points to the towpath, and we need to ensure that people have a safe way to get down to it. I'm also a big fan of the island on Conant between East and West Harrison, because you can see from the number of trees that have been hit that people still aren't slowing down or paying attention while they're driving. I'd much rather those cars hit a few trees than someone in another car or walking along the sidewalk.
That's your time.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Thank you. John Sayre? John?
Oh, boy. I'm calling this my CMAC Declaration. I stand before you today to address several important grievances on behalf of CMAC, a group that represents thousands of residents who have come together to voice their concerns and seek positive change. We are not just John, Julie, Rick, Chelsea, and Rose Marie. We are the collective voice of many in this community. Over the past few months, I've personally heard some troubling claims from residents that some members of city government has stated privately to them that CMAC only gives misinformation. We may get the information wrong at times, and we have apologized for that publicly when it has occurred and we corrected it. Now, do we sometimes face tough questions we can't answer? Absolutely. But when that happens, we've always turned to Patrick for guidance, and he's been more than willing to help us with the answers. And I appreciate that. We represent a vast community of people of diverse backgrounds who genuinely care for this community. When you speak negatively about CMAC, you're speaking negatively about those who put their trust in you, the very people who elected you into office. Let me clarify something. CMAC leadership has never been involved in the recall effort, as some of you have claimed. However, we do have members of CMAC at large participating in the recall canvassing, and yes, three of our leadership teams signed the recall petitions. Why? Because it's part of their democratic process and right. We're simply supporting the voices of the people who come to us every day with their grievances. Some of you seem to think that CMAC leadership is out to uncover dirt on the city. We're only investigating what the people bring as their grievances to us. I understand that distancing your administration from CMAC might be part of your strategy, just like officially today, because of transparency. This is my confirmation that CMAC is distancing themselves from you. I am a firm believer in the will of the people, and I do not believe that the fight against this recall or the way it has been handled is not putting Maumee in a positive light. If the Board of Elections rules in favor of the recall this second time around, I hope you'll consider stepping back from the fight and use your campaigns to present the reasons why you think you should continue to serve, letting the will of the people speak, not the will of your attorneys. Lastly, I've heard rhetoric suggesting that a single out-of-town investor is out to take control of our local government.
That's your time.
Thank you.
Do I have 15 seconds to finish?
You can, yeah.
I hope none of you truly believe that or will support that misrepresentation of fact. If this recall moves forward, I will personally work to not make that happen so our citizens can rest easy at night on both sides of the recall. I will support candidates who are not influenced by outside interest and who will work to restore Maumee to the community we all know and love. I stand by our decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Evan? Evan?
Hi, everybody. Happy St. Patrick's Day. This is my daughter. Um, I just want to talk about, everyone's here about the budget, talking about, you know, the arches and what they're doing at Conant Street, whatever, but I think it's kind of silly when we have a looming recall, which is gonna cost $100,000 in election cost from our general fund, which isn't appropriated for, which we're all gonna complain about, and then the campaign cost for every one of these people to run their campaign for a remaining two months. It's frankly, it's silly, and we have a general election where four seats are open so they could change the government, and it just makes us, and that's why 13 ABCs here are making us look like we're trouble Maumee. And then I want to talk about Phil Leinbach, because you haven't said anything about this recall. A fellow Republican, seven-year councilman, mayor, are all on the hot seat. You haven't said anything. So I ask you, since it went through the board election once, what is your stance on it? Go ahead.
You've asked me that before, and I gave you my answer before.
Because it's a very cowardly answer, and you like to sit up here and have a facade.
Go ahead.
It's the quorum when you want to speak. Okay. Not my experience. It's just, it's like you're the definition of penny holding up a buck, and that's all this is. It's moral grandstanding, it's complaining about like the concrete costing $120,000 more than asphalt. It's every time you interrupt the agenda, it's like you're just hearing of, as an obstructionist. And that's what this whole movement is. It's just hatred and making Maumee look silly when people like me and my age are coming back to move here.
We have some order, please.
I mean, it's, no, he's not, because they're all here for the people.
Go ahead. Go ahead. They'll try to interrupt you, but go ahead.
He has a right to say what he's saying.
You know, and, you know, whatever, Ms. Pocken, you can interrupt all you want. Please finish. Okay, yeah, anyhow, I mean, Phil, you really are their champion. I'm gonna go out on every street I can for a weekend with my daughter, campaign against you. I hope everyone up here remains receipt other than you. I think you've done, you are just epitome of the hatred brewing in Maumee that is a stain on our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick Hardy? Rick? Rick Hardy?
I love you, Phil.
You know, I had this all written out, was gonna read it, but I'm not going to. What I observed in this chamber tonight was what we have been asking for. You actually talked about the budget, where the money comes from, why are we doing this? We had an open debate here. How can us citizens get involved in this debate with you? Chelsea, two weeks ago, asked for some committees to be resurrected, and it fell on deaf ears. We want to be involved. We don't want the city to fail. We want to bring about positive change. But you're not allowing us to be part of the solution. I could sit here for an hour and talk, and everybody puts their head down.
Writing.
Same.
I would like to propose, and I will chair it, a Citizens Advisory Committee that is for the oversight of the budget. I'm throwing my name in there to chair it. I know another person that wants to join me on this committee. I think it should be three city council and four citizens. Everybody has a voting right. And it opens up the biggest thing that our country stands for, debate and compromise, which finds solutions that work for everybody. There's my offer. Please take me up on it.
Betsy? Betsy?
Thank you. Betsy Bayshore, 620 Jackson Street. I wanted to talk about fiscal prudence a little bit, but I would like to add on to the committee list, an audit committee. Many cities have them, many small governments have them. They're fabulous tools. You have a lot of experienced people who could be a part of that, and I'd like you to consider that in your list of committees. Anyway, in relation to fiscal practices, I've worked with about 200 governments, many of them in financial trouble over the course of the past 25 years, and I've seen spending practices that lead to financial difficulties. Sewer issues aside, we've got some large bond payments coming up. Those bond payments take a big chunk out of our general operating monies because they're general obligation bonds.
They are funded from water, sewer, and the B fund, and a couple of TIF funds.
Okay, so those large bond payments that we're paying on, we could be using that for street surfacing, could we not? If it's from that, okay. And I understand water and sewer, those are enterprise funds, the general fund can subsidize them, but they can't pay into the general fund. Totally get that. Regardless, I love budgets that are forward-thinking. I love them when they're well-discussed, when they're well-presented to the citizenry. Unfortunately, you're in a position right now where you have a low level of trust with your residents, and I would encourage you to take up that opportunity to talk about this three times. Councilwoman Puffenberger, you said, "We wouldn't have enough time to look at this and have three readings." You could have a special meeting with 24 hours' notice. That's more time than the three days or the five days that you've had to look at the budget. It would give you more time to invest in it, to think about it, to see if there are things that might be an opportunity or might be some kind of perhaps wrong direction at this particular juncture. We are entering an economic period of uncertainty, and I would encourage you to consider economizing so that we, as a city, we as residents, we as council, are prepared for any kind of downturn that might come. We don't want to be in a position where we have to start making significant cuts to services, charging residents for things that have been a part of our city services for years, because we didn't plan ahead, and we don't have money in the bank, and we don't have enough of a reserve. So that's my plea for the evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Jackie? Jackie Miller, is she here? Oh, yes, Jackie. Welcome, yep.
Jackie Miller, 70 Mallard Run. I'd like to address everyone present tonight in city council chambers. City council members, the mayor, city administrator, police chief, finance director, city attorney, all city staff, the reporters, and most especially, all my fellow citizens. Thank you all for being here tonight. I appreciate your presence. We all know that there's been a recall effort underway of some of our elected officials. These are a few of the things that I know about these seven officials from having attended many council meetings over the past five years. Among this group is a father of both a toddler and a newborn infant whose spouse works full-time outside their home, a councilperson who has recently experienced health issues, and who was sworn into office while still hospitalized, a mother who tells the story of her daughter who enjoys rollerblading with her father on the recently developed towpath park, a father of three active young boys with a community-minded spouse who also works full-time outside the home, a very proud Miami University alum who has offered his assistance to all undergraduates, a husband whose wife would prefer that he spend time with her in sunny Florida rather than the cold gray northwest Ohio, and a proud father who has a son serving in the US military. This list is not intended to be their complete bios, but it is enough information about them for me to know that these are good, kind, generous individuals who sacrifice their time to serve the citizens of Maumee. They are well-intentioned individuals whose careers in city government are being attacked with lies, misinformation, and disinformation. There has been a learning curve for this group of seven, as all newly-elected officials experience, and some mistakes have been made. Ordinances and resolutions have been passed that were unpopular. A few of these ordinances and resolutions have been reversed following the outcry of citizens opposed to the decisions. I believe that if any one of these seven citizens were your mother, your father, your son, or your daughter, your spouse, or your best friend, that you would seek to learn more of the facts and begin to correct the lies, the misinformation, and the disinformation.
That's your time.
You can just finish up your thoughts.
Okay. This is a good, a group of good, kind, and generous, real people who want to do what's best for the citizens of Maumee. Let us give them our support.
Thank you. Jim Phelan? Is it Phelan? Yes, yeah, thank you.
I am on, I live on 720 High Street. And I'm here because the condition of High Street, it was always a dedicated street. When we first moved in there 33 years ago, it was just dirt. And we called the city, and they said, "That's funny, we found $20,000 here that belongs to go down High Street." So they paved it. But that pavement has not held up, and we need sewers in there very, very badly. It's becoming actually an environmental issue, because I have grandkids. I have six of them who come over, and they play, and they get near that water that's been sitting there, and sitting there, and sitting there. And we get ducks, and we get, you know, animals, all, all the time. And I was, I've been doing this with Dr. Birch here for, what is it, three years, four years?
Four and a half, about.
Four and a half years, yeah. Trying to get something accomplished, and, I mean, we need this street, I mean, we need an improvement there. And we don't, I don't have any problem with an assessment that's been proposed. I mean, it's really no big deal to me to share in that because of what it would do for me. Now, there's people in my street that say, "Well, that won't improve your property." Well, it may not improve the value of my home, but it'll certainly improve traffic to your home if anybody is selling a home. When they see that street, and it's like in May, and they want to go to look at a house, they say, "I'm not going down that street, no. It can't be anything good there." I almost rejected it when I bought it 33 years ago, but I really like where I am, and I love Maumee. So if anything can be done about this and kind of get this thing going, I would really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Phelan. And Ryan Spangler? Chief, could you help him, please?
Hi, I'm Ryan from 1417 Shepherd Drive. I gotta leave town again the day after tomorrow, so I really wanted to pop in and just give thanks to so many people that have been checking on me daily throughout all this, you know, people that I was close with before, and even people that, you know, I wasn't so close with at the time, you know? I'm glad the news is here so they can see that Maumee is a lot more than some of this topical stuff that's going on. You know, there's a, there's a lot of love in this community, a lot of heart, you know, and just downright good people that are just kind of torn right now emotionally invested in some of these situations and stuff. I want to thank John Sayre, too, with his blessings in disguise, because I was able to come home after my surgeries, and I had some medical equipment waiting for me at home that I'd been trying to get.
I almost rejected it when I bought it 33 years ago, but I really like where I am, and I love Maumee, so if anything can be done about this and kind of get this thing going, I would really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. And Ryan Spangler? Chief, could you help him, please?
Hi, I'm Ryan from 1417 Shepherd Drive. I gotta leave town again the day after tomorrow, so I really wanted to pop in and just give thanks to so many people that have been checking on me daily throughout all this, you know, people that I was close with before, and even people that, you know, I wasn't so close with at the time, you know. I'm glad the news is here so they can see that Maumee is a lot more than some of this topical stuff that's going on, you know. There's a, there's a lot of love in this community, a lot of heart, you know, and just downright good people that are just kind of torn right now emotionally invested in some of these situations and stuff. I want to thank John Sayre, too, with his blessings in disguise, because I was able to come home after my surgeries, and I had some medical equipment waiting for me at home that I'd been trying to get from the insurance company for over two years, you know, and it's just, there's so many people, it just speaks volume of our, our community, of our town, you know, and, and, you know, I don't know, I, sometimes I feel bad sitting up here and, and looking at you guys. The people up here on the council have always been great to me, but I just wanted to turn around and thank my community, too, because they, everybody in such a whole, I mean, I know I've been a thorn in everybody's side at one point or another, you know, but I've learned so much throughout it all and gained so many caring people and friends, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we'll, we'll attempt to quickly kind of answer some of the questions that were brought forward, and Mr. Birch, you can kind of assist me. I'll kind of approach Greg in his fishing question. Obviously, we're not against fishing, and we're not trying to run fishermen out of town. The area that is in question is the West Harrison area, and it, I don't know if everybody's familiar with it, but it's about a block and a half, it's two small blocks, it's along the riverfront, and there's houses that kind of face the towpath. Perpendicular to that is Ford Street. Now, Ford Street, for quite some time, has had restricted parking on it because that was our emergency access down into the towpath for ambulances and police. So that typically has been narrowed and no parked for a while so we can get emergency vehicles down in, into that towpath. Now, the Harrison area, which is the 5 and 600 block of West Harrison, is literally, if you take away the, the driveways and the, the fire plugs, it's about 16 spots. So that's the temporary no-parking area, 16 spots. Nothing else has been restricted, nothing else. Everything else is wide open. The White Street access, all the way down River Road, believe me, like you, I know exactly the way in and out of that river. I've, I was born there, I know how to get in and out of there. Now, everybody has their own opinion. To me, that, that doesn't equate to running fishermen out of town. It's, we have to strike a balance between the residents there that have a concern and a temporary no-parking area. It's, it has zero impact on river access. I know Ms. Dai came up and talked about bathrooms in the towpath area. The reason, one of the biggest reasons why is to provide clean bathroom facilities for the fishermen. So the fact that social media kind of tries, makes you try to draw into that is one thing, but I've lived it, I know exactly the area that you're talking about, and it really doesn't have any impact on, on the, on the fishing access. While we're on the subject, though, is I would like to encourage the whole safety piece of this, because there's a lot of fishermen that come here that don't know the waters. They're not familiar with the way it rises if there's rain to the west, they don't know how to navigate the river in a boat, they don't know the shallow areas, they don't know how to anchor right. They overload boats and fill them with water. There's guys that come here and they, and they wade and put waders on, the rocks are very slippery. If you fall and fill the waders up with water, you're not gonna, you're not gonna survive that. Typically, no, not if, not if there's a current. My experience with the police division is we have river rescues every year, not only in boats, but also wading fishermen. So I just want to make sure that that safety plug is out there for those that are coming or are here that don't know these waters, like a lot of us do, and, and what it can bring. On the camping side, the rec center has never been an area to camp in. It's, it's not zoned that, it's never been allowed there. The Schroeder Farms over on Buttonwood, which is a very hotspot to fish, and it was very popular, they sold that property, it took that camping ground away, and for some reason, the fair board took it upon themselves to think they could start selling camping spots. They, they don't have the authority to do that, and they, they overstepped their boundaries, it was against all zoning codes. Camping's not allowed there. There, there's a couple special events a year that is, that we allow temporary camping, like rib-off and fare, because people stay there on, for that week. But other than that, there's never been camping there, and it's never been allowed. So I don't know how that all got out there, while I do know how it got out there, but I'm not gonna go down that road. But it's never, it's, it's never been allowed in that area. So I just, it, it's never been zoned that, it's never, it's never been that way. There's no camping in the middle of Toledo, there's no camping in the middle of Savannah, Oregon, or Perrysburg. They don't have camp, they don't have campsites in the middle of their city. And, and so, so, yeah, well, some do, yeah, but I'm just telling you, it's been in place for a while. I just want to try to give you some context with it, I don't want to argue with you about it, but I just wanted to give you some context on that. So I can, I'll be happy to talk with you afterwards, but we're gonna move on with our meeting.
You can't, you've never been able to park on Ford Street because of the access down, on, on the hill, down?
We're talking about the spot where all the houses are.
Yeah, that, that's West Harrison. That's West Harrison, that's about 16 spots.
You have Harrison, you have events, you have a gap, and then you have Ford.
Ford Street comes into it, perpendicular.
So Ford Street is closed off, correct?
It's not closed, yeah, yeah.
There's parking along that whole entire brake pathway along the home.
On, on Ford Street, that, that's an emergency access. It's been like that since?
I've been parking there 42 years.
Well, I don't think we're talking about the same spot. Chief, if I'm not, you can chime in if you can help me here with this.
I think south of Broadway is permanent no parking both sides of the road.
Yeah, and, and also on Harrison, there's no, there's only parking on one side of the street. I mean, there's, you can't park on two sides of the streets.
You can park the whole length of Ford, there, the whole entire length, not talking about the access system walk down the river. I can tell you that, that's perfectly fine. I'm talking about that whole stretch that you have going east up the lane, you can take a left on Wayne, that is far more than 16 stops. That's your driver's license.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm talking about West Harrison, 16 spots.
Okay, 16 spots. So what about all the spots on Ford? That's it, so that whole area, sir, from towpath down to Ford Street where we fish, that's that whole, that's that whole area. I see utterly, oh, I see little kids walking in there.
Yeah.
The people love us, they come out, they want fish, I get them.
I don't doubt that, I don't doubt that.
But it's still that watch, the watch is shut.
I'll be, I'll be happy to talk about with you afterwards. If there's a couple other issues that were discussed that maybe you can assist people with. I do know with one, somebody asked about an audit committee, we do have that. Go ahead.
Yes, we do. We have an audit committee meets every year. It is a fact that we have an audit committee, because you're on the list because there's no openings on it. I think that's what's happening, but we, we're required to have an audit committee, and we do. You don't have an audit committee if, you have both citizens that's on the audit committee. That's what the, that's, it's always been that way as far as I know.
If you could just answer, if you can help to answer questions.
Anyway, can I answer the other?
Yeah, we're not gonna get into discussion with this, we got a meeting to proceed with.
Want to make sure that, you know, I didn't just receive one letter from a senior citizen, I've met with 320 senior citizens in the last seven weeks. Very aware of the people who are on social security, exting comes, many of them didn't know that the city actually had a discount program, and it just tripled the amount that they have available to them if they are 225% of the poverty rate, not to, not just at the poverty rate, which is lower than $13,000 a year. They're eligible at $35,000 a year, and we are continually looking at ways to up that. We have offset the increase in the water rate to senior citizens, basically covering the REU, it eliminates the REU that we talked about, so just using what you, you know, bill for what you use. You're talking about a base measurement, residential equivalent to unit, you can't charge businesses the extra equivalent units if you don't charge the basic residential, that same unit. It's a number of units that you get charged for. So we are working continually to make sure, I'm well, I am well aware, as a staff member, I'm sure council is too, of the struggles that our seniors are having paying their bills, not just their water bills, but other bills as well. Also, wanted to make sure that we recognize that we are doing some, sorry, that we were doing some of the, some of the projects that we were doing in terms of parking. I want to make clear, and this is just to expand on what Jim was doing, now, sitting in a staff meeting, I had two calls, and I will not, and I promised the, the people that, on West Harrison, that reminded me that the signs were not up. Council didn't make a decision on it, because it's, because it's not something required by law for council to decide to do a temporary closure of parking on a street. When I first came here, I realized that they were closing down blocks of West Harrison during the wall I run because we had complaints from residents about what was happening when people got out of their trucks. There was a year when we missed doing that, that nobody reminded me, I didn't have the guys put the signs out. This year, I was asked, and I'm not gonna tell you who those people were because they asked me not to, and they're afraid of insults and repercussions from people. In fact, hold on, that's, what's that?
I don't live in those blocks, Greg. Do not live in those blocks, and I did not request for the, no parking to be put on there. That's why I left when you said so. It must make it true, Greg. It must make it.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and discontinue that, we have a meeting to go ahead and pursue. So we'll, this, we'll end citizen comments and go to the adoption of the agenda. I need a motion to approve the agenda is submitted.
And will, Mr. Mayor, we adopt the agenda?
Thank you. I'll second that. Second, thank you, call the roll.
Noonan.
Yes.
Puffenberg.
Yes.
Barrow.
Yes.
Fiskus.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Kurt.
Yes.
Lineback.
Yes.
We have one petition to communication, it's a report with the Board of Revision on High Street. Anything on that? Just, sure. Okay. So we need a motion to accept the PNC in place on file? Yes.
Thank you, Mayor, I move to accept petitions and communications in place on file.
And I second that motion. We'll call the roll on that, please.
Noonan.
Yes.
Puffenberg.
Yes.
Barrow.
Yes.
Fiskus.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Kurt.
Yes.
Lineback.
Yes.
And consent calendar, we'll need a motion in a second, and we'll discuss these. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor McDonald, I move to approve all consent calendar items.
Mr. Kurt.
I would second that, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Nine, one is authorize administrator to enter into a lease with Walcott House, the Maumee Valley Historical Society, and two is appoint Carla Lewis to the Tax Incentive Review Council. That was actually, I think Sarah Eden had that, and then she moved out of town, and it needs to be a resident.
Right, correct.
So she did have that, that was appointed back in the fall. Okay, any further discussion on that? Okay, call the roll on the consent calendar.
Noonan.
Yes.
Puffenberg.
Yes.
Barrow.
Yes.
Fiskus.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Kurt.
Yes.
Lineback.
Yes.
On a new business, a recommendation from the Finance Committee, approval of ordinance seven dash 2025, an ordinance declaring it necessary to proceed with and levy assessments for the High Street roadway and drainage project. We have two motions here, motion to waive the three readings and a motion to approve. Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Kurt.
Thank you. I, Mr. Mayor, I move that we waive three readings on, on item A under new business.
And I second that motion. Okay, we'll call the roll on that.
Noonan.
Yes.
Puffenberg.
Yes.
Barrow.
Yes.
Fiskus.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Kurt.
Yes.
Lineback.
Yes.
Then I, Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number 007-2025, ordinance declaring it necessary to proceed with and levy assessments for the High Street roadway and signage, signage project.
Drainage.
Drainage, drainage? There might be a misprint there, but I think it's drainage.
It's drainage.
Okay. Yep, and I second that motion. Okay, call the roll.
Noonan.
Yes.
Puffenberg.
Yes.
Barrow.
Yes.
Fiskus.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Kurt.
Yes.
Lineback.
Yes.
B is a recommendation from the City Administrator approving Resolution 007-2025, designating April as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Maumee. Can we get a motion on that, please? In a second? Yes, yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor McDonald, I'd like to make a motion to approve 007-2025, a resolution designating April as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Maumee.
I think it should be eight.
Oh.
It is eight.
008, dash, 2025.
You probably add one from there on down. Okay.
All right, they're both.
And I will second that motion. Second that, I'd like to just briefly state.
Hold on, it is a resolution, so it's number seven.
Oh, is it?
The prior was an ordinance.
That's right, it was an ordinance seven, this is resolution seven. Okay.
Okay, my original motion to approve Resolution 007-2025.
Yes.
Okay.
Stand corrected.
And I will second that.
Thank, thank you. The resolution, let me just briefly kind of read just parts of this. Whereas the city of Maumee desires to designate the month of April as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in recognition of the effects of domestic violence on individuals subjected to domestic violence and the effect on the community, this resolution supports the goals and ideals of National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. This resolution also recognizes efforts being made in Maumee and across Ohio to provide assistance to victims of domestic violence. There, now therefore be resolved in the city of Maumee that city council supports the goals and ideals of National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, commends domestic violence victim advocates, including Erica Capito, who serves many DV victims on behalf of the city of Maumee, domestic violence victim service providers, crisis hotline staff, the Maumee Police Department, and first responders serving the victims of DV for their compassionate support of survivors of domestic violence, and recognizes the strength and courage of survivors of domestic violence. Be it further resolved that Maumee should continue to raise the awareness of domestic violence in the United States and the corresponding devastating effects of it on survivors, families, and communities, and pledges to continue support for programs designed to assist survivors of domestic violence, hold perpetrators of DV accountable, and bring an end to domestic violence. So we'll call the roll on that, please.
Noonan.
Yes.
Puffenberg.
Yes.
Barrow.
Yes.
Fiskus.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Kurt.
Yes.
Lineback.
Yes.
C is a recommendation from the Finance Director approving ordinance 008-2025, providing appropriations for current expense and other expenditures for the city of Maumee for the fiscal year December 31, 2025. We need two motions on this as well, please, Mr. Barrow.
Thank you, Mayor McDonald, I move to waive the three readings.
I will second that motion. Thank you, call the roll.
Noonan.
Yes.
Puffenberg.
Yes.
Barrow.
Yes.
Fiskus.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Kurt.
Yes.
Lineback.
No.
D is a recommendation, oh, that passes, thank you. D is a recommendation from City Administrator approving ordinance 009-2025, amending ordinance 40-2024 salaries, compensation, benefits, terms, and conditions of employment of management and supervisory staff and declaring an emergency. We need two motions on this as well. Yes, Mr. Fiskus.
Thank you, Mayor, I move to declare an emergency.
I would second that, Mr. Mayor.
Call the roll.
Noonan.
Yes.
Puffenberg.
Yes.
Barrow.
Yes.
Fiskus.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Kurt.
Yes.
Lineback.
No.
And the motion.
And I move to approve ordinance 009-2025, an ordinance amending ordinance 040-2024, salaries, compensation, benefits, terms, and conditions of employment of management and supervisory staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I second Mr. Fiskus's motion.
Okay, we'll call the roll.
Noonan.
Yes.
Puffenberg.
Yes.
Barrow.
Yes.
Fiskus.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Kurt.
Yes.
Lineback.
No.
And that passes.[1794.51] Two motions on this.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor McDonald. I will first make a motion to declare an emergency.
Mr. Noonan.
Thank you, Mayor McDonald. Second that motion.
Call the roll.
Noonan.
Yes.
Puffenberger.
Yes.
Barrow.
Yes.
Fiskus.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Kurt.
Yes.
Lineback.
No.
And I will move to approve Ordinance zero one zero dash twenty twenty-five and ordinance amending Ordinance zero three nine twenty twenty-four salaries, compensation, benefits, terms, and conditions of employment of administrative support personnel.
Thank you, Mayor McDonald. I will also second that motion.
Call the roll, please.
Noonan.
Yes.
Puffenberger.
Yes.
Barrow.
Yes.
Fiskus.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Kurt.
Yes.
Lineback.
No.
Okay, that passes. And F, recommendation from the City Administrator, Ordinance eleven dash twenty twenty-five, an ordinance amending ordinance forty-one dash twenty twenty-four salaries, compensation, benefits, terms, and conditions of employment for directors, declaring an emergency. Need two motions on this. Mr. Noonan.
Thank you, Mayor McDonald. First, I would like to make a motion to declare an emergency.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Call the roll.
Noonan.
Yes.
Puffenberger.
Yes.
Barrow.
Yes.
Fiskus.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Kurt.
Yes.
Lineback.
No.
Thank you. That passes. And on G, a recommendation from the Finance Director approving Resolution eight dash twenty twenty-five, authorizing expenditure of funds for Maumee Seniors Incorporated. This is basically the city's support for the Maumee Senior Center on Detroit Avenue. Is this for the entire year?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. We need two motions on that, please. Yes, Ms. Puffenberger.
Thank you, Mayor McDonald. I would like to make a motion to waive the three readings.
I will second that motion.
Call the roll.
Noonan.
Yes.
Puffenberger.
Yes.
Barrow.
Yes.
Fiskus.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Kurt.
Yes.
Lineback.
Yes.
Well, we'll proceed to comments, and we'll, I'll waive and go to Mr. Noonan.
Thank you, Mayor McDonald. Couple things. One, in response to the whole issues with the fishermen, I mean, we've kind of talked about it already, but just know that, you know, you know, in addition to Mayor McDonald, like, I have no problem with fishermen. I mean, it's, you know, it's the nature and cycle of life for humans to go fishing, right? In my opinion, I don't think the no parking in West Harrison, you know, takes away from fishermen coming in and spending their money. You know, I think, you know, parking up a block shouldn't eliminate the ability to, you know, walk to, down to where you guys are fishing, where, and I don't know a whole lot about it. I wish I had more time to actually do fishing and hunting, and I would love to learn about that, but I'm assuming a lot of the fishermen actually stand, you know, with weight or what have you, for multiple hours to catch that, catch the fish that they're trying to get. So, you know, I think, you know, as far as the campground issue, you know, I took it upon myself to talk to the police chief. In addition, I heard from, and talking to the law director about it, and he informed me about the fire chief. You know, I know there's a lot of concerns with allowing camping on that fairground based on just the collection of people where there might be some fire code issues, obviously Arizona stuff, which we already talked about. You know, there's some buildings there that, you know, may not be of massive shape, right? So, there's a variety of things here. And, you know, you know, it's very interesting also with the West Harrison thing, you know, and I appreciate CMEC and all they do, right? But the very function of that organization, right, is to address and listen to the needs of citizens. And yet, when we, or I shouldn't say council, but the city, you know, addresses concerns of people on West Harrison, you know, we get bricked over the coals. We're actually listening to citizens, however few it is, right? You know, with the camp, with the campground, the people on Key Street and the people on Wilderness, right, they only have to deal with the fair and the ripoff and what have you, which are good events, I'm not knocking it. But, you know, adding to the point of having campgrounds or what have you, you know, there's elements there that they may not agree with, right? So, we have to look out for those residents. So, I'll stop on that issue. The second thing, we have a lot of people that, maybe not a lot, but some people emailed us about the budget. Obviously, people came up to speak. You know, I'll echo everybody else when they say that certain white items aren't necessarily addressed here. You know, I'll speak from my experience. When I first got on council, you know, we, I was on Finance and Economic Committee. We had the Elizabeth Street Pumping Station. That was on that, was on three different cycles. So, and again, I'm going to reiterate, you know, it's a proposed budget compared to actual. We may not spend all of that money. The other, the other thing was the post office, a million dollars for that. You know, it depends on what the developer agreement will be. It could be significantly less. And in my opinion, we should take the steps to, you know, do what we can to develop that into a potential flourishing, flourishing business akin to what we did for the Maumee Uptown Fondue Place, which I think is a wonderful site. The other thing I want to say is with the budget, you know, that's a, that's a months-long process. Any citizen here, and I encourage them to do so, you know, reach out to any member of our administrative staff, you know, to talk about, you know, our spending. Because I could tell you right now, it's, it's not an opinion, it's a fact, that we are good stewards of our money, because, number one, we've always had balanced budgets since I've been on council. Number two, we've been award-winning. From the state on. So, I'd like to say something else, but I'll stop there, so I'm not throwing in. I apologize. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Puffenberger.
Uh, thank you. I don't understand why immediately we are accused of not accepting fisher people or not accepting businesses because we do want to do so with boundaries. As soon as you introduce any boundaries, you are choosing to steer away a whole group of people. I do not live in the 500 or 600 block of West Harrison, Greg. There is a whole woods and homes that separate our homes. And unlike Noonan, I am very well aware of fishing. My husband does so all the time, straight back behind our house, down by White Street, the Rapids by Ford Street, down by Jerome Road Rapids. I'm very well with Buttonwood, Orlaines, all the places to fish, all the places out in Lake Gary, Acan, Bcan, the intake. Restricting a little bit of parking because a resident asks us to on two blocks, I do not see as a huge issue. I will just repeat that. The camping thing was never an issue because it was never allowed until recently. That is a conversation that can continue to be had, but camping was, has been, as far as I know, allowed there for events at the rec center. To open up to anything beyond that is a big discussion that can't just be had on a whim to react to some problem that was created because a piece of land sold in Perrysburg. And once again, I was also well aware of that because my husband is very connected in the fishing community and told me that piece of land sold. But, so, I mean, we're not trying to drive away fishermen. We welcome the fishermen. I've wanted to have festivals for walleye fishing every summer or spring to welcome. It's a little difficult to know when, when, you know, to have it because the water rises at different times, temperatures rise at different times, the fish come in at different times. But, we do welcome fishermen. I'd be more than willing to have conversations with people about the budget. I think it's, it's way more complicated than an email message back and forth can be had. Even, even when you have been sitting in on meetings and committee meetings and doing your research, there is still a very good possibility you're going to make some errors. And that was very evident by, you know, the Facebook post that spurred all the emails that we got. There is a very, I don't think it was on purpose, but a misunderstanding about some of the funds and where they were allowed to be spent or not. And then, when that gets put out on Facebook, everyone gets very upset, rightfully so, about information that's not true. It's very hard to then have a conversation about what is true when there's all these misperceptions to be had from the get-go. And to try to calm people into a state where they can actually have a conversation about it. I mean, because that is a process to get there. They're literally seeing red, is what I like to say. It's like a bull seeing red. You are not going to, to get anywhere with that person trying to have a conversation until the anger level can come down, and you can talk to him about municipal finance. I would give my husband crap all the time about, he would say, my taxes pay for this. And like, no, honey, you don't work in Maumee. Your taxes don't pay for anything because you pay them to Toledo. So, I mean, very basics of municipal finance that a lot of people don't understand, and I did not previously. I did a little bit more than others because of the spaces that I've worked in. But, I mean, this past three to four years has been a huge learning curve. But, I just ask people, try not to jump to conclusions before asking questions about the whys. I mean, even, I know, you know, I know those that are very, very well aware and have been very involved suggesting for us to give money for cosmetic improvements to water and sewer bills. We cannot do that. It has to be money from the Water Sewer Fund. It cannot be given to, to citizens. It's not an option. So, please, if you want to have a conversation, you guys know my contact information. I'd love to have a phone conversation. I love to meet. Email is not the best way to especially talk about these very complicated issues in that kind of format. It's just not a way to do it. Yes, Greg, you can contact me too afterwards, where we can talk after.
Thank you. Russell?
Yep.
Mr. Barrow.
Thank you, Mayor McDonald. This week, the Sunshine Community Home, they had a person retired, Larry Knight, and I had the honor of even able to deliver the proclamation to him. Thank you, Mayor McDonald. That was really, really nice to do. Larry has been a renowned, well, he is a renowned artist, but he had been working at the Sunshine Community Center for, I think, ten years. He just retired. He's a very accomplished, world-renowned artist. He loved working with the developmental disability children at that facilities. It was nice to be there and enjoy the afternoon there. I just want to say thank you again. It's, it's really something what they've done for Lucas County for nearly forty-seven years. And one little thing I'm going to touch on here, our clerk was gone, but I didn't get this in time, but I can tell you with emergencies we do, they're necessary, they're explained why they have to be done. As an emergency, I wish there was another word for it. It's not G, I forgot. Gosh, we better cover ourselves because before I came on council, I spent about a year or so on the audience listening and said, why is everything an emergency? Didn't you know this was going to happen? There's a reason for it. It's the term they used. But, before twenty twenty-one, I began my first term, in two thousand nineteen, and I couldn't see the paperwork, it was too fuzzy, but I know there was well over two hundred emergencies at that time. And I can tell you, at the end of twenty twenty-four, and I don't have a specific number, but I believe it was quite a bit under fifty that was, that was done at my emergency. If I misspoke, and I will clarify that next week, but I hope to have a next meeting, but I'm going to have some particular numbers to pass out because that seems to be a hot button. It's been made a hot button. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fiskus.
Thank you, Mayor. Bring it up every meeting, but Earth Day cleanup is going to be April twelfth, a couple Saturdays. Also, I got contacted by someone from the Rotary. Mr. Berry got me in touch with them. We're going to do a walk along the river and search out some invasive tree of heaven, hopefully get rid of the nasty spatter and lantern flower. We're going to mark them out, and then we'll do another cleanup along the river, hopefully to, you know, take care of that. And I just want to say, you know, if, if we can't have a calm conversation with each other, whether we don't agree on anything, agree on very little, we're never going to get anywhere. We're tearing each other apart, and it's, I'm right, you're wrong, nobody, we've got, like, I, I told some of these people, like, it was almost too much for me to, to go on with this. And I seriously considered it because some of the things are being said about me and my family. And you can disagree with, with the things that we vote on, they're not always easy decisions. I don't always like making them, but we have to, we have to think, you know, to the future. We're not just thinking of today, tomorrow. We're thinking of years and years down the road. And part of the reason we got in this situation that we're in with sewers is people just didn't want to do anything. Whether they do or not, that's up for debate, you know? But, we can't just kick the can down the road for these things. And, and we may see them as fluff, but when you think of the budget, thirty-three million dollars is, you know, a hard number to wrap your head around, but think of it like your house. You know, you've got to repair your house. You're not going to completely ignore everything in your house when, when something goes wrong. You're going to fix it, yes, but like the analogy that I told someone the other day is, I'm not going to stop mowing my lawn because I had to replace my furnace. I'm still going to do that. I'm going to, I'm going to tackle the little things while I can because I got to keep doing that. "I'm not going to stop mowing my lawn because I had to replace my furnace." I'm still going to do that. I'm going to tackle the little things while I can because I got to keep doing that. And that's all I ask, is that we just, you know, no matter what happens in the next few months, we all have to live with each other. I don't think any of us want to leave Malmi. We love Malmi. So, whether this happens or that happens, we're living with each other. And like, we can have tough conversations. I'm more than welcome to have a tough conversation. But we can't go into it with our fists. You got to go in with open mind, open arms. And that's all I ask. And John, if anyone has said that, told you that I've said anything, I hope you come up to me afterward to tell me because I can 100% assure you that I have not done any of those things that you said. Thank you.
Mr. Harris?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor McDonald. I'll try to keep this as short as possible. I'm a little disappointed that some people did walk out of here. I was going to try to address some of their comments. I prefer to do that when they're actually present, but I do believe it's important to kind of say something. First, I would probably say, Evan, I was not very fond of your comments tonight towards Councilman Leinbach. I get that, but I just don't think that you approached it in the right way, sir.
Just, it's, Mr. Harris, it's time for comments. Thank you. No conversations.
Dave, you still here, Puffenberg? I think, if I just understand correctly, your comments were based basically about the senior citizens and your concern for them, correct? I would probably say that in the Finance Committee meeting, we talked very strenuously about seniors and some things that we really want to do to try to help them through these tough situations. So, that, I do appreciate your comments. We are taking that very seriously. Hopefully, we can come up with something that can make everyone happy about what we're doing. Greg, I believe you said you're a former Marine? Thank you for your service. I was going to make that comment too, but thank you for your service. I also did serve, and I'm only mentioning that because I ended up having to be stationed in Norfolk, Virginia. While I was there, I can tell you that the minimum walk from my parking spot to my ship was probably 3/4 of a mile just to get to work. I can understand that not having some parking spots close can seem like an inconvenience, but I don't believe anyone that would have parked there didn't get fishing in. So, I don't see how that's pushing fishermen away just because of those parking spots, because you still got to fish. It was a little inconvenient. I get that. I understand. It wasn't our call. You know, sometimes you got to walk a little bit. I would be happy to speak with you afterwards. Absolutely. As far as the area at the rec center not being utilized as camping, I mean, at this point, our law director was just following the law. If down the road, we want to have a discussion about that site, we can do that. Just unfortunately, right now, it's the law. You got to follow the law. He has a responsibility to do that, fiduciary duty to do it. So, I do apologize that that's an inconvenience too. We will look into it for the future. Rick Hardy did mention something about having four citizens and three council for future and having a citizens representative. I think my biggest concern is I sat there two and a half hours with two citizens, as I was one of them. Rick was there. They had every opportunity to speak up, and there was not a word said. I would have appreciated if you guys had questions, that you would have brought it up. I can understand it's a lot of information. Maybe you had to gather some thought, but you had every opportunity to participate in that meeting as well. So, I was just a little disappointed to see the Facebook post the day later because, I mean, asking questions is very important. And I've put that out there many times, that we really need to try to communicate. And I'm not going to really do it on Facebook. I tried answering a couple of questions about the fishing situation as far as the parking. I put my phone number out there. I was criticized about it. So much so that I started getting attacked for things that I didn't actually do. And I just wanted to kind of set the record straight. If anyone has ever heard that I showed up at the recall center to intimidate people, which I do have the post where that was said, and it was said again by Ms. Pocken. My concern with that is the fact that a month before, I had a conversation with Ms. Pocken. She said, "I'm sorry I missed you at the recall center. Sorry I had to leave about 12:15." I said, "Hey, I had good conversations with Sarah and Tom while I was there." She goes, "Sarah and Tom are both great. I left a little after 12. I'm usually there 9 to 1. Feel free to stop by anytime." It was disheartening to hear her then say that I was there to intimidate when I was welcomed there. Now, I did go back a second time. Well, the first time I went because Ryan Gotluzki, I can't say his name, Gotluzki, Ryan Spangler, said, "Hey, you know, I went there. It's a great thing to talk to people no matter what their views are. I went there. John Sayer, I met him in the parking lot. He even put a Facebook post out saying, 'You know what? I talked to Josh Harris for the first time. It was a great conversation. We didn't have any issues talking.'" I didn't have any issues on the inside either, not one. But then, to be told that I was there to intimidate people, I don't understand that when I was welcomed. And the second time I did go back, there was no one in there. I only went there to talk to Amy about something personal. Mr. Newman, you were there. You said, "Hey, Josh, you know, you're welcome as long as no one's here, but if someone comes, leave. That's perfectly fine. You were in the space. That's your right." But it was just a conversation with her. So, I don't know where this idea that I was there to intimidate people came when I was welcomed. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kirk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Administration, Patrick, and your staff for reaching, at least coming this close to the satisfactory resolution with Ohio EPA. I know it's been a lot of hard work. And the whole recent budget cuts out of Washington don't disrupt that at all. So, I'm hopeful we get it done soon. Let's see. I received, all of us have received dozens of letters urging us to, concerning the budget, to vote, to not accept the budget. Most of it very critical, but I did receive at least two letters of support, and one in particular I was really, really pleased to read. It was, it took this person a lot of time to write it, very long. I appreciate what this person had to say. Concerning the recall, the gentleman who spoke, Kevin, is it?
Evan.
Thank you. Mentioned some things, in particular, the cost of the $100,000 election. And there's a lot of talk about the $100,000 election, that we're going to have to have an election. We're going to have $100,000 if we don't resign. I just want people to understand and remember, we did not start this recall initiative. Those who started it, presumably, were aware that it's going to be an expensive election. But if I don't resign, if there's a $100,000 election, $100,000 election, that's not going to be on me, all right? Or Margot, or Josh, or John, anybody. We didn't, we didn't start that. I'm glad to see Ryan back now that he's left. I enjoy his, I look forward to his Spangler says, comments every couple of weeks. So, welcome back, Ryan, wherever you are. And Margaret, you showed a part of yourself I had not been aware of. You need to be a fishing guide. All the great spots and where to go and what to do and...
I just listen to my spouse. I only fish on the lake.
I don't care where you get it. You'd be a good guide.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And Mr. Leinbach?
Thank you, Mayor McDonald. I want to echo Councilwoman Puffenberg's comment about communicating by email. It's fine for just a quick exchange of information, but if anybody really wants to discuss something, call us, schedule a meeting, do something. I'm sure all of us are more than willing to do that. But, and clearly, the personal contact, face-to-face, makes it a whole lot harder to get angry and upset with people. I mean, we see what social media has done to the fabric of our society. So, email, maybe schedule an appointment, and then get together and talk. Ted, you took my item on the sewer remediation deal. I wanted to get that one too. This is, that is great news. There's been a lot of hard work going on. Don't know if it's given Dr. Birch any more gray hairs, but it has been difficult, but well worth it. We're just within striking distance, so that's great. Thank you. And lastly, regarding the domestic violence awareness resolution, I mean, if it helps deter just one instance of domestic violence, it will be a cause to celebrate. If it doesn't, then I'm very pleased still that the city of Malmi recognizes the importance of combating domestic violence as best we can in tangible ways, like deploying a first-class professional police force and EMS staff, as well as employing a victim's advocate in our court system. Those are the real commitments that can make a difference in some people's lives. I'm glad we do it. That's it.
Russell? Thank you. Mr. Mayor McDonald?
Yes, go ahead.
I would just like to add something else. Take it back in with the councilman here. The sewer issue is not, hopefully, the resolver that light at the end of the tunnel. Dr. Birch has been working on this since we were notified about it with the EPA in several, several hair-raising meetings. I was present for a few of those. And it's been about a four and a half and 3/4 year of engaging them and changing and moving and trying to adapt to the rules and the regulations and time slots. So, thank you, your administration, very well. Thank you.
Thank you. And City Administrator update?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do want to, since the sewer issue was brought up, I want to make clear that this isn't just something I've been working on. I know you all recognize that, and thank you for the kudos. But Jennifer, our Finance Director, Matt Miles, our Capital Projects Manager, Joe, and Jake, and all the guys, and Alan, everybody who's been working on this as a staff, I want to make very clear that this is probably the single largest expenditure the city will ever undertake. It has the biggest impact on each and every citizen. And the fact that we have so many people, including C-MAC, that originally, when we started talking about how that program would be set up and how it would affect people and the disincentive to wait, was a great idea. That was directly from C-MAC and that the interest rate would be higher the longer you waited to provide a disincentive. I just want to remind that this program, as large as it is, is literally a logistical nightmare. Jennifer can attest to this because we talk about it literally every day, probably every hour, where we kind of look at each other and say, "This is really a tough thing to do." Not just that, from staff hours. I mean, Jennifer, Alan are always working weekends. We are here again this weekend. We're trying to make sure that every, we're doing this to accommodate the fastest solution to make sure that residents pay the least amount possible to take care of this problem. With that being said, in the air of that, I did want to say something kind of along with what John Fiskus said tonight. You're right, we can't get anywhere if we scream at each other. The respect that the council shows people who show up at that podium, you don't see one person on the council heckling anybody or speaking over top of them out of decorum. But we do see that from some people in the audience. And it's not, there are some people out here that vehemently disagree with this council and me. But they aren't heckling us. They're respectful. And it would just be interesting to note that if, and I'll say this, if Ms. Puffenberg was somebody's spouse, I don't think they would like it if somebody were heckling in the audience and shouting them down. I can assure you, no matter what you hear on Facebook, that Margot Puffenberg never talked to me about parking on West Harrison, ever. It's not one of the people, there were two seniors that spoke with me. I get those calls every year. But I do want to make sure that people understand that people are human beings, and try to sit there in the audience and heckle and talk over people is not only distracting to the public decorum here, but we expect, if we're going to respect each other from a perspective, we need to make sure that we're both practicing that, that we all are doing that. It was a little shocking tonight to see the bantering back and forth and the aggressive nature in which that happened. It was a little disappointing, quite frankly. You know, Malmi is a great community, and I'm just, it was a little shocking to see that people thought that when it came to council's term to speak, after they had given people the ability to do so without interruption, that it was necessary to heckle and talk over them and talk in the audience as if what they were trying to say in their comments wasn't important. And it is important. And so are the comments we receive from the audience, even if we don't agree. I mean, they are absolutely important. So, I thank you, and I wish you a happy week and a happy weekend to come, and hope you catch a lot of fish. I think that's important too. So, I do want to say that we do have walleye banners welcoming walleye fishermen, but they're not in yet. They're on back order. They go on the polls. They've been ordered some time ago. But I want to make sure that, obviously, loads will be going up. But we can't get them that fast, and it's not because we ordered them after this meeting. So, thank you.
Thank you. And we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mayor McDonald. I'll make that motion. Good afternoon.
Thank you.
Excellent meeting.
Yep. I'll second that motion. Call the rule?
Noonan?
Yes.
Puffenberg?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Hurt?
Yes.
Leinbach?
Yes.